Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, May 7th, 2013, at 6:30 PM. We're at the Palm Coast Community Center for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in liberty and justice, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nettis.
Here.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Here.
Councilmember DiLorenzo.
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you very much. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the April 16th council meeting and the April 30th council workshop. Are there any additions?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion to approve, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Proclamations. I'm going to do the first one. Bob Whitty, if you care to join me? Bob is on the executive committee of the American Cancer Society. Invite your whole crowd up, sure, of course. As you may know, the reason that I've chosen to do this proclamation, my wife Priscilla is in the final stages of her treatment for cancer, so this is kind of near and dear to my heart. Whereas more than 1 million people in the United States get cancer each year, and whereas the American Cancer Society was founded in 1913 and is dedicated to helping persons who face cancer by supporting research, patient services, early detection, treatment, and education, and whereas the American Cancer Society relies on the efforts of thousands of volunteers who help make a difference for people facing cancer each year, and whereas the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life is the world's largest movement to end cancer, through which more than 4 million people had more than 5,000 events in 20 countries, raised much-needed funds and awareness to save lives from cancer, and whereas at Relay for Life events, communities across the globe come together to honor cancer survivors, remember loved ones lost, and fight back against a disease that has already taken too much, and whereas Relay for Life of Flagler will take place Saturday, May 11th, at Central Park in Town Center, with dozens of teams and hundreds of participants camping out overnight and taking turns walking or running around the lake until Sunday morning, and whereas in 2012, Relay for Life of Flagler raised approximately $80,000, and for 2013 has set a goal to raise $100,000 to support the efforts of the American Cancer Society. And whereas, because cancer never sleeps and is an issue that affects us all, the residents of Palm Coast should provide a solid base of support and community goodwill for the American Cancer Society's annual Relay for Life of Flagler. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of Palm Coast, Florida, to hereby recognize the week of May 5th through 11th, 2013, as American Cancer Society Relay for Life of Flagler Week in the city of Palm Coast, and encourage the support and participations of all citizens in Relay for Life of Flagler 2013. My pleasure to sign this as mayor. I would like to thank the city council for the proclamation. Mr. Mayor, thank you, and all of the folks who are here tonight. We would certainly like to invite you out to participate or observe what we do at Relay for Life. I think it'll be a life-changing moment for you if you come out and look at it. I'd like to introduce Bob Gambalane. Bob is our chairman for 2013, and he's in charge of the event. Bob, if you want to say something real quick before they throw us out?
(LAUGHING). Mayor Nettis, from all of us, community volunteers that do this, we thank you and the city of Palm Coast for raising awareness to this wonderful event, and hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Group picture. Group hug.
Your honor, who's going to accept this proclamation for public service?
Community service? Myrna.
And the city manager assures me you won't have to contend with the rain on the event.
Never been wrong so far.
Our second proclamation is recognizing the week of May 5th through May 11th as Public Service Recognition Week, and if Myrna Crimmy from the city would come up and join us...
I think she's got a crowd with her, too.
Bring 'em on up.
We actually have a group of employees here, but we're going to have Keith King, who is celebrating his 35th year with the city, to receive the proclamation.
Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working, and whereas public employees take not only jobs but oaths, and whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, border patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others, risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world, and whereas public servants include teachers, doctors, nurses, train conductors, astronauts, safety inspectors, laborers, computer technicians, social workers, and countless other occupations, day in and day out, they provide with dignity and integrity the diverse services of their government demanded by the American people, and whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now, therefore be it proclaimed, that the city council of the city of Palm Coast does hereby recognize May 5th through May 11th, 2013, as Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. Sign this 7th day of May, 2013. John Nettis, Mayor. And accepting is?
Keith King.
Keith King. Thank you. Thank you.[449.13][449.13](APPLAUSE).
We also have a...
That's a word.
We also have a video that we would like to present to the employees and the city council.
Each May, the city of Palm Coast celebrates Public Service Recognition Week to honor and thank the hundreds of public servants who make Palm Coast a great place to live, work, and play. On behalf of all of our citizens, I would like to thank the employees of the city of Palm Coast who work so hard each and every day to keep our community moving forward and to deliver the many services that provide us with an excellent quality of life. We appreciate your dedication and your professionalism.
My name is Bill McGuire. I'm the city councilman in District Number One of the city of Palm Coast. One of the things that we're very proud of in District Number One is the Indian Trail Sports Complex. This facility was designed, constructed by Palm Coast employees. It's in constant use, and we've been able to attract many, many activities in the sports arena into the city of Palm Coast from not only the state of Florida, but elsewhere in this southeastern portion of the United States. The Indian Trail Sports Complex brings in people that have never seen Palm Coast, that are getting their first look at our city, that bring in revenue and spend it here, they domicile themselves here while they're going to their sporting events, and it's been a real star for the city of Palm Coast. We're quite proud of it, and please go out and visit it whenever you get the chance.
As a new councilman in District Two, I've become well-informed about the many challenges we face protecting the environment, preserving the beauty, and maintaining our quality of life here in Palm Coast. By the many public works projects, enhancements of our walkways, trails, parks, access to the intercoastal waterway, and special events, I'm inspired by the spirit of our community and dedication of all the people who serve it, both our professional staff and our local volunteers. I say thank you to all of you. With this combination of civic pride and high personal standards of responsible care, I believe Palm Coast can build on this foundation and continue to prosper. It will take prudent economic development blended wisely into our rich coastal Florida history and growth tradition. I look forward to working with you on it.
Hi, I'm Jason DiLorenzo, councilmember from District Three. Have you seen the new modifications to the Beltair medians? Did you know that our city crews built those? Wow, just think of the future when we drive down Beltair and those beautiful tree canopies are all grown up. What a fantastic place Palm Coast is.
The city of Palm Coast has completed a number of stormwater projects in District Four. This past year, in the R section, we expanded the ditch line and put in new and bigger ditch pipes to expand the drainage capacity. The city will be putting in a new ditch behind Ralph Carter Park and Rimfire Elementary School. We also did a landscaping project on Beltair and constructed two new multi-use paths on Beltair and Whitefield. As a representative of District Four, I would like to thank the city employees for doing such an excellent job and maintaining high standards of professional service. Thank you.
I would once again like to say thank you to our employees for another great year. Our employees have always demonstrated high quality, being efficient, and once again, this year was a great example. I'm very proud to be a part of this team, and it helps make this a great place to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[752.13][752.13](APPLAUSE).
Oh, councilmembers, I think you've got a new career buddy.
I don't think so.
Sincere thanks to all the city employees. If you haven't had an opportunity to participate in our Citizens Academy, I would encourage you to do so. It'll give you an opportunity to meet some of the people that you don't see on a day-to-day basis and get a sense of just how hard they work on behalf of all of us. Agenda item number four, proclamation recognizing May 2013 as Drug Court Month. Receiving the proclamation will be Circuit Court Judge David Walsh, Drug Court Coordinator Michael Grignier, Cheryl Lewis from the Florida Department of Corrections, and Deborah Flaherty, also from Drug Court.
I might also introduce Reverend Coffin from our foundation.
I was thinking earlier about the earlier proclamation about cancer. Well, this is a proclamation about another form of cancer, so to speak. So whereas... There's a glare here. Drug courts are an effective tool for reducing substance abuse and crime in our criminal justice system, and whereas for over 20 years, drug courts have been restoring lives, reuniting families, and including improving working communities across the nation...
Can I have my glasses?
I might need another set of glasses here. Through more than 2,700 operational drug courts, and whereas drug courts facilities facilitate community-wide partnerships, bringing together public safety and public health professionals in the field against drug abuse and criminality, and whereas research shows that drug courts are demonstrably effective and significantly improve substance abuse treatment outcomes, substantially reduce drug abuse and crime, and do so at a lower cost than any other justice strategy, and whereas the judges, attorneys, treatment and rehabilitation professionals, court personnel, and others dedicated to drug courts and similar types of treatment programs are healing families in this community, and whereas the city council of the city of Palm Coast recognizes the successful work of the practitioners and participants of drug court programs to reduce the impact of drug abuse in our community. Now therefore, as it proclaimed, that the city council of the city of Palm Coast does hereby recognize May 2013 as Drug Court Month, and urges all citizens to recognize the significant contributions of drug courts and congratulate this year's drug court graduates. Sign this 7th day of May, 2013. City of Palm Coast, John Nettis, Mayor. Thank you very much.[947.82][947.82](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Mayor, if I could just take this opportunity to thank the city for presenting this proclamation. I've been a circuit judge for over 12 years, been presiding now over the Flagler County Drug Court Program since December, and I can tell you, I've been most impressed with the quality of the graduates in this program, the fact that we can get people back to their families, back to a job, out of the criminal justice system in a very economic way of doing business. So we thank you for that. I want to invite you, Mr. Mayor, and the other council members to our Drug Court graduation, which is May the 17th, be a week from Friday. I know you, Mayor Nettis, have attended in the past, maybe some of the other members have too, so I want to tell you, we'd love to have you come. So thank you again very much. We're glad to be here.
I'd just like to echo the judge's invitation. The Drug Court graduation is probably one of the most meaningful things you can ever see, because you will meet adults who have abandoned their families, abandoned their jobs, and devolved into individuals who are not happy with themselves, proud of themselves because of drug addiction. When you go to these ceremonies, you will hear about the hundreds of hours that they put in in the rehabilitation program, and the number of clean days that they have on their record, and invariably, these people are returned to society as healthy, productive family members. It really is worthwhile going to at least one if you possibly can. The job these folks do is monumental.
Where are the graduations?
The graduation is held in the Hammond Justice Center down on State Road 100.
You call number 101.
Benel.
It's in Benel. Plenty of parking out front. It really is a ceremony. Everybody ought to see it at least once in their life, just to understand what can be done. Agenda item number five, resolution approving lease agreement with Player Development Academy of Florida, Inc. Mr. Landen.
Mayor, city council, a couple of years ago, we established Prosperity 2021. At that time, city council and city administration really took a different direction in our economic development efforts and trying to diversify it, worked with the county on major manufacturing opportunities, but also trying to help small businesses strengthen our neighborhoods and create one job at a time, and so the combination of those two things helped diversify our economy and make us stronger in the future. Part of this program was attempting to reach out to our sports, particularly our youth sports groups, ask for their assistance in actually promoting Palm Coast, promoting our facilities, and in helping bring tournaments into town, helping bring more visitors that spend their dollars. All these are outside dollars that are great for our local businesses, particularly our small businesses. They took us up on that. We started the Sports Academy, excuse me, Sports Alliance, and this was a classical example of us all working together, because Mr. Baseball himself, Fred Lures, known for his involvement in Palm Coast Little League, has a brother-in-law in New Jersey who was into soccer, and actually invited his brother-in-law to come down and talk about trying to develop a, or look into developing a new soccer program, something we don't have here in Palm Coast or Flagler County, and actually build a facility with the private dollars and partner with the, not just the city, but some of our local soccer clubs. Been working on this for about a year, and this proposal you have here is kind of the, hopefully, the climax of that proposal, and if approved, we'll move forward with actually implementing the program to bring this new soccer club, this new opportunity for our kids here in Palm Coast, but also economic development. For the details, Beau is going to outline the program.
Good evening, Mayor and council. To start the presentation, we'll just do a short video that kind of outlines our sports The city's played a large role as far as being able to increase the amount of fields that we have so that we can bring these bigger tournaments, soccer, lacrosse tournaments here to Flagler County. When our city manager told us that they were going to do that, the impact of the amount of teams, even just from last year to this year, has increased, I'd say, overall about 30% to 40% of our business, and giving us times of the year when it's generally slower for the hotel, which keeps our employees working. For example, we're in July, and we have a large check-in for this weekend, selling out the hotel, selling out the hotels in the whole area, due to the fact that we've attracted these teams because of our increased fields and the care that they've taken to make those fields attractive and the costs attractive for these groups to come.
Just under 100 teams coming into the area from all over, South Carolina, Georgia, Miami, Tampa, all over, Tallahassee, so it generates a lot of money in hotel revenue and restaurants and delis and coffee shops. I just think it's tremendous for the Palm Coast area.
When you see these venues come into town, you see the crowd, and you see our numbers do jump. We're in the Home Depot Shopping Center, so you have the Holgins, you have Outback, you have the Days Inn, and we see that getting crowded, people walk over from the Days Inn, we get ice cream. It's important to see these things come into town, I think it is, because it does, it does help the whole economy of Palm Coast.
Really happy with what the city's done to increase the facilities to bring more teams in, you know, adding fields or doing our just maintenance at the fields to make everything better for these huge tournaments to bring more people. We've definitely seen over the past year or so, an increase in business when these events come to the Indian Trails, whether it be soccer or lacrosse, and we've seen a nice increase in business on the weekends, you know, the Friday night, Saturday, Sunday, a nice increase of, you know, 10% to 15% in sales, based on these people coming in from all over the state. Especially see it when what we would call slow season, the March, April, May, when the snowbirds head back up north. It's nice to have a couple of the soccer tournaments and the lacrosse tournament on Father's Day that filled in the weekend sales there, and then, you know, we get a really nice fill-ins over in October for the lacrosse tournament, and just, it's really been helping
So that brings us, sets the stage for tonight's agenda item that you have in front of you. It is a public-private partnership with a lease agreement with the Players Development Academy of Florida. The partnership, of course, without both the public and the private sector, we couldn't accomplish this item. Of course, the city manager talked about Prosperity 2021 and our focus with city council, attracting those sporting events and marketing our community as a place where sporting events can occur, and of course, as you heard from some of the businesses in Eclipse and others not on Eclipse, of course assist our businesses, especially during those times when hotels aren't as full and things like that. And of course, the video that you saw there was about Indian Trail Sports Complex. Of course, that was accomplished through a partnership as well between the Tourism Development Council and the school board. Without those partners and the grant funds from TUC, we couldn't have accomplished that, and you'll see just another example, the Palm Coast and the Flagler Beaches facilities guy, that was a joint effort between city staff and tourism development staff in order to go and attract some of these tournaments. So continuing on with those partnerships here this evening. And just of course, you saw some of the efforts and successes, it kind of grows every week. Just two weeks ago, we had state hub knockout rounds here with 64 teams from all over the state of Florida competing on our fields, and the compliments about both our community and our fields was tremendous, and of course, all that's been possible through a partnership with Tourism Development Council and some of our members from the Sports Alliance and our local sports clubs, of course. And there's more coming. The Just for Keepers Camp will be here in June and July, and there's also hope of not only bringing just the camps, but also his businesses' distribution of his goalkeeping gloves as well. So just some examples, some successes we've already had, and what we hope is this agreement will take us even further with adding with those fields. Just a little bit about Player Development Academy, and I know there's some representatives here from both, family members of the gentleman from Players Development Academy, and of course, some of our local sports clubs that might speak to us as well. PDA was established in New Jersey in 2000. They've had a very successful history being there, just let, you know, they developed 20 international professional soccer players that play around the world. They have two alumni that play on the U.S. Women's National Team. They have seven players that were drafted by major league soccer teams, and over 500 alumni that play in college, and really, their goal is develop players, take their talents so they can get an education and play in college. Just a little bit about them. Just so everyone knows, the site location and the concept, it's located on US1. The property is part of, part of the Palm Coast Park DRI. It's south of Matanzas, north of the Parkway. It's about 60 acres to the right, it's just a proposed site plan that we did in talks with PDA of just how the fields could be laid out so they could achieve their goal of six fields, at a minimum, developing five fields, to just give you a concept of the property that we're talking about. This property was a requirement of the developer as part of the Palm Coast Park DRI to deed it over to the city for use of activities, parks, and activities. So the city, you know, can't sell this property for any use, it has to be for recreational uses, just to note that. Some of the key lease terms, this is of course a lease agreement. PDA would commit to developing five soccer fields and any ancillary facilities at its expense. The city would not contribute any funds to develop, developing the park and the soccer facility. Maintenance, PDA will be responsible for the maintenance of the complex and all associated costs. Once again, the city would not be involved in the maintenance of the facility, but from cost and a staff standpoint. Use, this is very important, the PDA is their a high-level soccer club that have exclusive use of the property. There is exception for the public access to the Shale Trail and use of fields by the city to host tournaments up to four per year. Once again, we currently have eight fields now at Indian Trails. With the addition of these fields and our ability to use it four times per year, it would open up the possibility of attracting more regional and national soccer tournaments, which means more heads in beds and more spending in our local economy. The term of the lease agreement is a 25-year initial term with optional five-year extensions, and the PDA would have the option to purchase the land at appraised value during that term. Lease payment, $10,000 per year. Really, our focus, though, is in lieu of those annual lease payments, that PDA hosts two significant special events per year, and that's defined by the number of hotel nights that PDA would hold in their city. So we want folks to travel here from other places, stay in our hotels, and spend money in our local business. That's really the focus of this public-private partnership. A couple other items, PDA will provide recreational soccer programs to the community. City would offset any permit or impact fees, and then city would provide and transport film material located at city facilities, and this is the film material left over from Swale Rehab that we continue stacking and can't remember if it's Mount Tony or Mount Capella, that are located on city sites. Once again, this is property, just make clear that this property, it's going to be owned by the city, that has no plans in the next 10 years according to our capital project list, so it'll remain vacant unless city council decides to do something with it. Just recap some of the public benefits from this public-private partnership. By entering into this, you can see the public's benefits. By entering into this lease, the fields would be created with no capital costs or maintenance costs by the city. And once again, the city has no plans to develop a park site in the next ten years according to our capital improvement plan. By adding these fields, we go kind of to the next level of twelve to sixteen fields. It really takes Palm Coast to the next level of being, being able to host those more regional and not just regional Florida, but regional southeast and national tournaments. It opens up to that possibility. And of course, as the video, you know, alluded to at the beginning, the economic benefits to the local economy, the hotels, the restaurants, and the other businesses. Also, another benefit, it really strengthens Palm Coast brand, not only as a Florida sports destination, but regional, national, and international. And these things kind of tend, once you get talked about in these circles, whether it's soccer or lacrosse, it just brings more and more of these events and more visitors, of course. If you visit Palm Coast, we feel you may want to move here, you may want to bring your business here. And of course, additional opportunities for youth and really a focus of PDA, higher-level soccer to get more kids to college playing soccer, and of course, the additional opportunities for recreational programs. And I think that ends my presentation.
Council questions?
Did we define, Your Honor, as significant events, they have to do two significant events? What is the definition?
Bo, could you amplify what a significant event is?
Sure. We define it by hotel room nights, because that we can, we can actually count, and it would be two hundred hotel room nights on an annual basis.
Per, per event?
No, two hundred over, over the year for the least. So it would be one hundred per event.
Minimum.
Minimum.
Okay.
Just to amplify that a little bit, two weeks ago, I believe, Bo talked about, we had a modest tournament with sixty-four teams. Those are players, family members, siblings. The two largest hotels in Palm Coast were totally sold out. So this, this helps our local businesses do what they do best. It helps them succeed at their business. This is a season when hotel rooms are typically fifty, sixty percent occupied, so for at least those three nights, our, our community was booming. Mr. Lewis?
Yes, just for the record, I, I was one of the council members who had some concern or about the agreement, but as I hear more and more about it, it falls into place in terms of being a, maybe a winner for Palm Coast. My only concern now is can they, can PDA maintain the fields at the same level or the same high standards as the, as our public employees maintain our fields now? That's my only concern.
Well, and just to respond to that, that was one of the things that really attracted PDA was the quality of our fields are in place. And then the lease agreement does provide some language that if they do start to fail to maintain the fields, it would be considered, you know, I'd probably let Bill answer that, but, you know, they'd be in default, they have a time to cure it. But the way PDA operates and the level that they play, their expectations are that their fields are going to be maintained, you know, always higher than the city, but we'll see.
We'll see.
Council member, on, in section 5.1 of the lease specifically provides that the maintenance will be in accordance with the written and adopted standards of the City of Palm Coast's soccer playing fields, should be maintained at all times, in a good playing condition, in a manner consistent with or better than the standards of similarly situated playing fields maintained by the City of Palm Coast. So it's in the lease?
Thank you.
If, if maintenance of the fields is part of the requirements, is it an option that they would entertain a bid from the city to maintain those fields and bill them for it?
We have offered that possibility and suggested that they go out and do a bid process and then let us decide whether or not we would like to actually submit a bid with it.
We're already in the business.
Right. Strengthen the partnership also.
Any other council questions? If not, let's open the meeting for the public, and if the public wish to be heard on agenda item number five, please approach the podium, give us your name and limit your contribution to three minutes.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. Just for the clarity, where is it located and what is it being used, the land, and what is it being used for now? Thank you.
We'll get you an answer. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Alterose. How does this benefit the taxpayer?
We'll get you an answer.
I see it's not on a ten-year plan for anything, but why are we given a twenty-five-year lease on it when it's beyond our scope at this time? That's a lot of land to give away or whatever because it's on option to buy. Am I right? That's what he said.
We'll get you an answer.
Thank you.
Hi, Bob Jugo, Palm Coast. I see all the benefits of the soccer people and the soccer players and the soccer companies and the benefits to the hotels, but what's the benefit to the residents? What benefits does it bring to us? Brings more traffic, more people in? I mean, I don't benefit from that. I'd like to have somebody tell me how the residents benefit from this besides the hotels and the PDA.
Next speaker.
Jack Carroll, Palm Coast. I read in the papers, I think it was either Orlando or Volusia County that's starting up their soccer tournaments, and they're going to go for the same people that we're going through. Now, how is that going to affect us if they be, you know, they have, if it's, I don't remember if it's Orlando or Volusia, but it's one of them. They have more to offer to people than we do, besides Flagler Beach. You have, Orlando is beaucoup of entertainment. So I'm just wondering, how is that going to affect us?
Next speaker.
Welcome back to a familiar face.
Frank Meeker, Palm Coast resident, and pleasure to see you all tonight. It's good to see a bunch of friendly faces. Well, they're friendly of the county, too, but you guys are a different set of friendly faces. And I mean, I, there's no doubt in my mind that it looks a little bit different back there without at least one Dunkin' Donuts coffee cup sitting back there. But just, you might think that I'm here in support of soccer tonight. I'm wearing my old Flagler United Youth Soccer sweatshirt. I've got my Italian soccer jersey on underneath, but in reality, I'm here in support of kids. I started Flagler United from nothing years and years ago and built it from one team up to ten before I got fed up and left, and we ended up dumping it onto Rich and Reggie back there, who have taken it to a level through FC United that I couldn't envision at the time. My, my visioning generally is pretty good. I always think that my, that I've got really good vision and everybody else around me's got their bifocals on. But Reggie and, and Rich have, are proposing taking soccer in Flagler County and Palm Coast to the, to the highest level, well beyond what I could have possibly imagined. All I see are positives from this. I don't see the city out a dime on what they're doing. Even if the entire thing fails, it could go back to a cow pasture as far as that goes, or at the very least, the city just inherits a set of really nice soccer fields and a nice soccer complex paid for by somebody else. So there are so many pluses that I see, particularly to the economic development side of things, and many of you will remember those discussions that we had in the early days when I talked about having gone down to these soccer tournaments before as a soccer coach and spending three days on the road with, you know, sixteen screaming girls and their parents and everything else. And I think the, the numbers on that last tournament work out to somewhere around thirty-four-hundred to thirty-six-hundred people that were visiting here in Palm Coast, depending upon the size of the team. I see nothing but positive impacts from an economic development standpoint, standpoint all the way across here, and I hope you'll support the, the item. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. So you're going to approach the podium, we'll close the public portion meeting, come back to council, but first, as far as the location, if you were going westbound on Palm Coast Parkway, make a right on state on US-1 and go up, oh...
Half a mile.
Half a mile, you'll see some cows grazing. That's the location. At the top of the diagram or the aerial photograph, you'll see a dotted line that goes across. That's a shell path that goes across wetlands and connects directly to the Indian Trail Sports Complex. So if you know where Indian Trails is on Bel Air, if you went directly west, you'd come to this complex. So that's the location. As far as benefits to the taxpayer, Bo, you're an economic development guru, how does this benefit the residential taxpayer?
Well, it benefits in a couple different ways. Well, you know, first, obviously, if we're going to build a park and recreation facility, the normal course of action would be use the taxpayers' dollars to construct, not only construct, but maintain that. There is already a need for additional fields, and obviously, this way allows us to not use taxpayer dollars to construct and maintain these fields, but let someone else do it. So that's the first, you know, benefit right off the bat to the taxpayer. In addition, of course, the economic impact that results from this, you know, you have more businesses operating, more cash registers ringing, that makes more sales tax, that eventually comes back to the city and the county through sales tax collection. So, and just the overall, you know, business activity, of course, you know, generally leads to jobs and growth in that area as well as far as the tax base is concerned. Did I cover?
Let me, let me, if I could, add a couple more. You know, it's, it's always hard to connect the dots as to when someone's, when a local business cash register rings, how does that benefit me and my neighborhood? Well, how many of you have seen the foreclosed homes when people didn't have a job and they had those, those homes that went vacant or the property values went down? And the more people that we can make sure keep their jobs or maybe add jobs, I think that benefits our neighborhoods, it benefits the whole community. And these type of events are, are a huge benefit from an economic development standpoint. Let me keep adding to that. For a grandfather that has to get on the road also, every time my granddaughter has a meet, a little different sport, I, I always appreciate it more and more when we have that meat here in Palm Coast. That ten-minute ride home is a whole lot better than that three-hour ride home. And if that doesn't benefit our families, I don't know what, what does. We, we can keep, keep going here. This program, it started in New Jersey, was actually designed to try to give some kids who might not otherwise be able to go to college, get a college scholarship. And that's one of the goals of this program, is to allow some young athletes who wouldn't necessarily otherwise be able to go to college, actually step it up to that next level. And Bo has actually refereed a tournament that this group was involved in and talked about how, when he came back, before we even really got Bo involved in this process, how this tournament, which was in Sanford, had more Division One college coaches on the sidelines than parents. And that's the type of level that they're hoping to bring here. So, and just think what kind of recognition that would give our, our community. So, you know, taxpayers aren't paying a dime. We actually are helping create jobs, keeping small businesses operating, bringing in outside dollars. These are all, you know, outside dollars, even the construction of the, of the facility, which is being funded by private outside dollars. All those are a benefit to the community. I, you know, I, there's probably some others, but those are, yeah.
Your Honor, if I may tag on to that, tourism development is something that we've been successful at. I mean, there's a lot of money and a lot of, of high-powered brain power in the city and the county with Helga Van Eckert's people trying to bring business and trying to bring revenue into Flagler County and the city of Palm Coast. But when you talk about tourism, this is a success story. And, and what Mr. Lannan is talking about here is we're taking something we've, we've already demonstrated has brought jobs to the city, has, has put revenue into the city, and we're growing it. You know, sure, we'd like to see the new General Motors plant come here and everybody go to work for twenty dollars an hour, but let's get real, what we have done here, what we got to sell is we've got tourism to sell. This is a beautiful place to go and visit, and it's a beautiful place to go and attend an event. When, when we get venues that come in here and bring large amounts of people, they bring money with them. And as, as Bo and Mr. Lannan have said, this money translates into tax dollars, and, and the tax dollars that the city and the county get from this, hopefully, will transcend the need to go back to the citizens and, and look at taking a big bite out of their adverum taxes. So, you know, anything we can do to parlay something we've already shown that we're good at into something even bigger, we'd be a fool not to, to consider it, especially when it's not going to cost us any money to do it.
And I'll just add a comment to that, if I may. Organizations like Player Development Academy, they've looked at Orlando, they've looked at other venues, they've looked at other locations. Their due diligence tells them that this is the place where they can be successful. And just, just one more comment. Other than the direct benefits to the cities, to the counties, in sales tax revenues that are returned to us, bed tax revenues that are returned to us, planners across the nation tell us that a sustainable community, typical residential community, has seventy-five, eighty percent residential homes and twenty, twenty-five percent non-residential, retail, commercial, and industrial. The old saying that, that Mayor Canfield used to talk about, the average resident gets a dollar thirty-eight worth of services for every dollar they pay in taxes. Your non-residential get fifty cents worth of services for every dollar they pay in taxes. So if we can help our local businesses succeed, that broadens the tax base and relieves some of the burden that heretofore has been primarily beyond residential. Now, the last question that was asked, Bo, you alluded to the fact that in our ten-year capital improvement plan, we have no plans to build any new parks. Why then would we go twenty-five years out on this lease? The obvious answer is they're going to need time to recoup their investment, but beyond that, how does that fit into the, the longer-range plan for parks and recreation?
And, and I, you know, it's not in our ten-year plan, that's because that's where we stopped planning is ten years. I mean, there's a lot of projects really out in the horizon. So I know city council reviewed the capital program through ten years because that's kind of where we stopped, no one has the crystal ball past that point. The real reason for the twenty-five-year lease is this club is going to make, you know, a six-to-seven-figure investment in this property. So to have a short-term lease where you don't know if that amount of investment you make in that property can essentially be taken away from you, they, they need a long-term lease to make that kind of investment. So, and once again, they'll be developing a recreation facility, so even if a default in the future doesn't work out, the city at a minimum will get its property back and can put more cows out there, or, you know, will have a park, park that we did not pay for constructed, so.
And just, just one more comment on this issue. This property was deeded to the city as part of a DRI, a development of regional impact. When a developer proposes a large-scale project, there are certain obligations that, that fall upon that developer. In this particular case, they had to agree to donate certain amount of land to the city for recreational purposes. There were two other DRIs in that same area, the Nioga Lakes DRI and the Old Brick Township DRI. Part of their development obligations are recreational facilities within their developments. So there will be other recreational facilities in our community that will not cost the city any money. They'll be the obligation of the developer. And I think that answered all the questions.
Yep. Mayor, the, the other question we had is competition. What, you know, other communities are paying attention to this, this same industry because the, the sports industry is huge and it's billions of dollars every year in, in the country and throughout the world. You know, the fact of it is, is anytime you have competition for trying to attract an industry or attract a business, yeah, it's competitive. I mean, that's one of the reasons why we had to step up and say, all right, if not Palm Coast, then St. John's County was our next option. Coast, then St. John's County was our next option. They made it very clear they wanted to come to North Florida. And so, the question is, is would it be Palm Coast or someplace else? What tips of scale for us right now is the quality of our current program, and our partners we have with moms and dads who are already have our soccer moms and dads, and partnering in the programs they have. So, it's like any other industry, we have to continue to be competitive. The downside is, is these gentlemen to my right put this in the newspaper, all the other communities look at it, and we know they're going to gear it up and say, uh-oh. Back to Bo. Bo, one time, was refereeing a game someplace else and said something to another coach, and the coach says, "Where are you from?" Bo says, "Palm Coast." He's, "Oh, that's the place that's stealing all the tournaments." So, it is competitive, but they lack the location. Midway between Jacksonville, Orlando, Daytona Beach is right around the corner, a nice ride up the highway from South Florida, Tampa's not far away. That's what they're looking for, and it comes right into Palm Coast, and so, that central kind of location. But I'm going to tell you, the best thing we got going, they all say, is the fields and the quality and the commitment we've made to this program, and the partnerships with the clubs that are privately owned or in operation. So, I just can't tell you how, you know, we have something that we really can sell, and we're selling it hard right now, and it's being successful.
Additional council questions or a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number 6A, a resolution approving a contract with Wharton Smith for construction of Water Treatment Plant Number Two Zero Liquid Discharge Project.
Mayor, we're going to do 6B too, under one presentation.
Okay.
Okay.
So, 6A and 6B.
This is our capital improvement program, project that we've been working on for a couple of years. It's a requirement of the Clean Water Act. Steve and Richard are going to make the presentation. I think Steve's going to take the lead here. And I've got to keep talking and stall here a little bit longer. Oh, there you go. Thank you. Take it from here, Steve.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Nett, City Council. We're here today to talk about Water Treatment Plant Two Zero Liquid Discharge Project and the potential award of that project to Wharton Smith. Going to start by telling you a little bit about the history of the project and Water Treatment Plant Two.
Steve, if you get a little closer to the mic, I'll pull it towards you a little more. Thank you.
Water Treatment Plant Number Two is a membrane softening facility, and it was completed in construction in 1992. It utilizes upper Floridian groundwater wells to provide the source water for the ultimate treatment at the plant. This treatment process produces concentrate, or a byproduct stream, of water. The concentrate is currently discharged into the Royal Palms Waterway, just west of Bel Air Parkway. This is a map that gives you a little bit of an idea on where the plant is located, as well as the discharge location. Water Plant Two is in the southern portion of the city, located just off of Bel Air Boulevard, as I said, in the southern portion of the city at 50 Citation Boulevard. The discharge point is just off the intersection of Royal Palms Canal and the intersection with Bel Air Parkway. Permitting, the current permitting production of Water Plant Two is slightly more than 6.3 million gallons per day. That treatment capacity utilizes a source water that's required to obtain that 6.3 million gallons a day of roughly 7.5 million gallons of source water need. And then you see a little diagram at the bottom that just shows you that idea. The groundwater comes in, it's treated, the permeate, or finished-treated water that goes into the system that we all utilize and out of our taps, is roughly the 6.3 million gallons a day, and then the concentrate discharge would be 1.2 million. It's still liquid, it's just a concentrated liquid with minerals. So, how did we get here? The EPA determined the current concentrate discharge method is not allowed by the Clean Water Act. Therefore, DEP notified the city via an administrative order on May of 2008 that our concentrate dispo-- dispo-- excuse me, disposal permit would not be renewed. The administrative order requires that the city devise an alternative method of disposing of the concentrate. That administrative order allows a time period to get that accomplished.
Excuse me, Steve?
Yes, sir.
When will the disposal permit expire?
We have just negotiated an extension with them to give us until May of 2015 to get the project accomplished.
Thank you.
How did we get here? An evaluation of concentrate disposal alternatives based on cost, regulatory compliance, environmental impacts was completed in 2009. Those alternatives consisted of 12 different potentials, with actually even three alternatives of three of those 12 potentials. The zero liquid discharge was selected out of those 12 to have the highest potential. Therefore, we ran what we call, what the engineers call, a pilot study to determine if their basis was accurate. The ZLD pilot study confirmed the treatability, feasibility, and economics as favorable in Through RFQ process, the city selected McKimmon Creed engineers to design and permit the final ZLD process in October of 2011. So, what is zero liquid discharge? Zero liquid discharge is a lime softening filtration process that treats the concentrate stream to remove those excess mineral contents. The ZLD-treated finished water is then blended with the current finished water from the water plant. The excess minerals that are removed by the process are contained in the dewatered lime sludge, which is similar to what we have at Water Plant One, and hauled off-site. The new ZLD process will be integrated into the existing water treatment plant and will operate as one facility. Action list. The city advertised the ZLD project for bid in May of 2012 and received six responsible bids. Wharton Smith Construction, the builder of our most recent water plant, Water Plant Number Three, was the low bidder with a price of $9,542,000. Wharton Smith Construction has agreed to hold their price, even though the bid opening was held over 10 months ago in June of 2012. What are the project benefits? What does ZLD do for us? It achieves the regulatory compliance that's required as part of the AO. It increases water plant design capacity by roughly 1.2 million gallons a day, which also equates out to us not needing to build three wells to establish that same source water. It eliminates the discharge permit and the associated sampling costs that are involved with the discharge permit. It meets the consumptive permit requirement for alternative water supply. It's green. It incorporates the city's green initiatives by conserving water, recovering, and using a byproduct while providing an environmentally sustainable solution. It delays costs associated with future expansions by creating that 1.2 million gallons of capacity. What do we do now? We're proposing to split a contract with Wharton Smith into two phases, to allow for pre-construction activities to begin while sale of the 2013 bond issuance is completed. Therefore, Phase One would consist of pre-construction service activities at a cost of $100,000. Phase Two would consist of all other construction activities not completed in Phase One. We would adopt a resolution to award this contract. We would also adopt a resolution for bond fund reimbursement, which is a legal requirement to utilize the 2013 bond revenue funds that are used prior to the issuance of the bonds. So, we go to project schedule. If we award the construction contract in this phased plan, we'd award it, we're proposing to award it, May of 2013 for Phase One and the pre-construction activities. On the current schedule, Phase Two would be a notice to proceed would be presented to Wharton Smith in July of 2013 to begin the onsite construction activities. Competitive sale and award of the bonds takes place at current schedule, June 11th of 2013. The final bond closing is completed in July of 2013. We estimate, based on these dates, that we would obtain a substantial completion of the construction of the project and the administrative order compliance by September 2014, or shortly Open up for questions.
Counsel questions?
Your honor.
Mr. McGuire, we'll start with you.
Richard, can you delineate what's in the $100,000 in Phase One?
Yeah, it's mostly paperwork. It's getting the contract signed, the contractor gets his performance payment bonds together, insurance, and then we start the process of shop drawing review, and that all has to take place before they can start ordering materials.
Mr. Mayor, the contract was recently amended and added to, so that the following will be the requirements for the $100,000. As Richard said, it'll be acquiring bonds and insurance, finalizing the construction schedule, providing the scheduled values, completing erosion control and site utilization plans, production planning, meeting with vendors and subcontractors to determine scopes of work, and starting the shop drawing, submittal, and review process. That is what, that's what makes up Phase One.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Well, Mr. Reichman, after the first part of my question, in terms of the split, on the bid side of it, I noticed that the city staff, that's utility staff, and the engineering that we have, were part of that dissection process. But there were six people competing, six companies competing, and I don't know who they were, and I don't know at what level that you used to weed out five and pick the one. So, perhaps you can explain that to me.
Mr. Lewis, the six companies competing were actually the construction companies competing for the bid of the award of the construction contract. So, Wharton Smith is your low bidder, and there were five other responsible bidders that would have been all higher than the $9.5 million that Wharton Smith would have awarded.
Much higher? How much higher were they?
I do not have that information off the top of my hand, but I believe the closest, and I hate to guess, but I think the closest next one was just a little, slightly under 10 million. But we're--
You see, where I'm coming from, we're not part of the process, so we have to rely on what's given us in terms of making decisions. But it would be nice to see some of the other pieces of the process as you went through it, at least for me.
Yeah, this is strictly awarding the low bid.
Yeah. But I don't even know what the other five were.
Pardon?
I don't even know what the other five were, just for--
We can get that information for you.
But I don't need it now, because we're going to go ahead and make a decision. But I mean, it would have been helpful just to see what the others were.
Understood.
Mr. DeLorenzo.
The disposal permit, it expired, right?
No, sir. It's an active permit right now.
After you were able to negotiate an extension. It had expired, or was about to expire?
No. I'll expand upon that a little bit, and we also have our environmental specialist, Brian Matthews, here today, as well as part of the design team from McKimmon Creed here, Ryan Popco. But I'll try and take that with Jason. The AO sets forth a timeline that the DEP allows for you, to give you time to look at alternatives. Therein lies that 12 alternatives that the engineers studied, determined what was a feasible alternative to putting the concentrate directly into Royal Palms Waterway. So, a good amount of time, as you saw, in May of 2008, we were notified, long time ago, that's a long time ago. So, they gave us, I believe, correct me, guys, roughly five years?
Four.
Forty-eight months to attempt to accomplish that. We got a good portion into it, and we met with the DEP all along the way, letting them know where we were, providing them information, and therefore, based on that, they allowed us some extra time to get it accomplished, and we now have been given to May of 2015.
Okay, that was the clarification I was looking for, is that they're just not, they didn't just extend the permit, they extended the permit because we're working towards solving the issue, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think this comes to mind as to why we need to support our utilities, in that some people think that when we invest $9 million or $9.5 million, we're getting lots of extra capacity. In this particular case, we're getting 1 million gallons per day of additional capacity, and we're also offsetting future costs of not having to drill three new wells, which, if I'm not mistaken, maybe you can refresh my memory, how much do they, does it cost to drill each well?
Roughly, the well sites that we've been activating in the past here, quarter million, I say, so quarter million to slightly more, so three-quarters of a million probably to a million dollars in three wells.
Okay, so if you do a net of what we're paying for versus what we're getting, there's, there are some additional benefits, but the frustrating thing to me is that when you spend this much money, it's due to environmental regulation, not for additional capacity. And I think that helps me understand that having clean water is not a fixed equation based on what it had been in the past, that it's changes based on stiffer environmental regulation. Is that right?
Well said, Mr. Ferguson. The 1.2 million gallons of capacity is really a side benefit to getting this accomplished. Most of the other alternatives did not have that side benefit of actual additional treated capacity to the city.
Thank you.
And if I may, I'd like to offer some clarification for the residents, because this is not a requirement that stands alone. Most people don't realize that nobody in Florida owns any water except the state of Florida. You don't own the water. If you've got a well on your property, you don't own that water. If you are by a stream or a lake or a river, you don't own that water. Only the state of Florida owns water, and they regulate the use thereof. They created five water management districts. We're in the St. John River Water Management District. They tell you where you can dig a well, how deep you can drill your well, how much water you can take out, how frequently. They regulate that entire process through what's called a consumptive use permit. Now, common sense will tell you that eventually, if you keep drilling wells in the ground, you are going to adversely affect the environment, because many of our wells are shallow wells, we're pulling down water from the wetlands. What the Water Management District has said, kind of looking forward, is we recognize that you can't just keep drilling wells and taking more and more from the environment. So, they have said, as part of your consumptive use permit, you must explore alternative water supply. You got to find some other way to get water. Well-- Well, this 1.2 million gallons qualifies as an alternative water supply, so it brings us into compliance with a second agency, the Water Management District, that ultimately regulates our usage of water. So that's an additional benefit, ancillary benefit. Any other counsel questions? If not, let's open the meeting with the public. Anyone from the public who should be heard on Agenda Item 6A or 6B.
Bob Jurk, a couple of questions. Where do we dispose the sludge? Where is it disposed? Who takes that contaminant and has it dumped someplace in their county or their property?
Get your answer.
Number two is, does the commercial water benefit by being more soft than it is now from this process? And third, what is the anticipated interest rates on our bonds we intend to issue? Thank you.
We'll get your answer. Next speaker.
Ronald Kuba. On the extra 1.2 million extra water, we have to drill wells, and it's not particularly with them, but isn't there a Dead Lake out here in Flagler County, and they have manatees in them? Is that water good? I mean, we go to the state for St. John's River water, isn't that water from St. John's?
I'll get your answer. In fact, I've got an answer, but I will give you the answer.
Okay, you know, you've got all this water around here, and we can't get it? That was the main thing on that, and the dumping of the solids was very important, and was it in county, out county, or in the city itself?
We'll get your answer. Next speaker.
Jack Kyle, Palm Coast. Now, we're going to take out all this excess, whatever it is they're going to take out, right? In other words, we've been drinking this water with all this stuff in it already. So we've been jeopardized all these years, and now all of a sudden, we're going to get clean water. What happens to the extra, after you take out a certain amount of chemical or whatever it is that they're going to take out? What happens to the stuff that's still stuck in there, that doesn't come out, that's not purified or gone through the whatever the process is, right? So now we're going to start drinking that other stuff, so I think we're in a bad situation.
You're good until you glow in the dark, Jack.
Next speaker. Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Alteroz. I'm probably going to be redundant. I'd like to have a simple explanation about why do we need a new contract, and explain to me these content costs for the taxpayer. A lot of us are senior citizens, and it seems like there's a lot of new things keep coming up, and they just approve this, approve that. And the same thing about capital expenditure, I don't know what they are, but my concern is advocate for the seniors and for residents who constantly, you know, you're asking us to pay projects, and you say it's not a partnership, we're not going to pay, and then we turn around, the taxpayers are paying like the tennis court, which, you know, we don't use, and it just seems that a lot of times, you just approve things, and I would like for you to be concerned about the residents, senior citizens, and people pay taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Oh, Bella Redwings fan here.
Charles Ebert, Palm Coast. The understanding that the people are not understanding is EPA and our Clean Water Act dictates that we have to do this. It's not because of the date we want to do it, that if we don't do it, you end up with dirty water and get fined, because we are, because that's what we're going to end up with. Okay? Now, the other thing is, I come from Michigan, and we have a river up there called the Clinton River, and it's in Clinton Township, and that river is contaminated because of the discharge coming out of the plants of overflows. An influx goes into that lake, which is Lake St. Clair, which is a contributory to between Lake Erie and Lake Huron. So you don't swim south of that lake, because E. coli grows there, and that's the purpose of the Clean Water Act.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. So you don't approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. I'll take one of the questions, because I know the answer intimately. With all this other water around us, why don't we stick a straw into Dead Lake, or Lower Oclawha River, or the St. John's River, or what was the other one? Crescent Lake was the big one. Quite a few years ago, Richard, I can't remember, five years ago, six years ago, when growth in Palm Coast was going tremendously, the Water Management District called us all together, the city, the county, all the cities, and said, "Boys and girls, you're going to run out of water, and we're not going to let you have anymore." Just that simple. They said, "You're going to have to do something other than ask us for wells." And we, at that time, proposed several alternatives, other water sources. How about the Lower Oclawha River, which is very nice, clean water, by the way? How about the St. John's River? How about Crescent Lake? Dead Lake is too small. You would tremendously adversely affect the environment if you were to drill water from it. Crescent Lake was a little bit larger. Basically, all of our studies that were done at that point said these are not acceptable water sources. If you think about it, there's a constant battle going on between Colorado, Nevada, California, over the water in the Colorado River. Nobody wants somebody to take their water away. The same argument is going on here in Florida, Florida, Georgia, Alabama, arguing about who gets what water. Trying to go to somebody else's property and take their water is not a good strategy. But the bottom line, the answer to the question, as the gentleman said, "We're not doing this because we like to, we're doing this because the EPA says we have to," the Water Management District has simply said, "No, you can't use these other water sources." So, you know, if Palm Coast were 100 miles north of here, south of here, or west of here, we would have much different issues. We just happen to be situated in an area where there is relatively little decent water available. Okay, question. Sludge, what do we do with the sludge? There's this nasty stuff, this lime sludge with all these glow-in-the-dark minerals, what happens to it?
First of all, the sludge is basically calcium carbonate, it's lime sludge. We produce lime sludge at Water Treatment Plant Number One, have for many, many years. It's not regulated waste, and currently, or over the last several years, we've been able to get a contractor to haul it out. He mixes it with sand and shell and uses it for road base.
Richard, highlight a little more as to that process, because, you know, it almost sounds like we've got nasty stuff. It's not nasty stuff, it's actually...
And Jack's questions were kind of interesting. We have two different processes for treatment. One is lime softening, which we're currently using at Water Treatment Plant Number One. That process is an age-old process, been used for decades, and the membrane softening process, which uses low-pressure reverse osmosis membranes to soften the water. We are using fresh groundwater from wells that's high in minerals that are not desirable for aesthetic and taste when it gets delivered to your home. So we remove those minerals, soften the water, that's what we call softening, removing mostly calcium, and that concentrated minerals currently gets discharged in the Royal Palms waterway. At Water Treatment Plant Number One, that concentrated minerals get bound up in a calcium oxide that reacts with the water and binds up those minerals into a calcium carbonate, and that becomes the waste stream. So at Plant One, it's bound up in lime sludge. At Plant Two, it's discharged into the waterway, and it's just concentrated minerals that occur, naturally occurring in the well water that we pull out of the ground. So our proposal here is that we're going to add a lime softening process at the tail end of the membrane process to take that concentrate, which is concentrated minerals, treat it with a lime process similar to Water Plant One, bind it up in a lime sludge for disposal, and the liquid gets returned back as drinking water, hence the zero liquid discharge.
And then the sludge is hauled, you mentioned the hauler, and...
Correct.
And they use it for...
Yeah, currently, for years, we actually shipped it out to farms for a number of years, and they were actually using it as a soil conditioner, but it's difficult to work with because it's kind of clay-like, and so it's difficult for the farmers to till it into the soil. So over the last several years, we've been able to get a local contractor to take it. He mixes it with sand and shell and uses it for road base. Either way, it's a non-regulated waste, it could go to any kind of landfill, could go into fill pits or something like that, but right now, it's being used for road base.
Essentially, it's chemically inert.
Correct.
It's not toxic or harmful.
Calcium carbonate is chalk.
It's chalk.
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to ask a question, then I'm, because I already know the answer. You told me that Water Treatment Plant Number One is a lime softening plant, the excess minerals go away in the form of lime sludge. Water Treatment Plant Two is a membrane softening plant, the excess minerals currently go away in a bipoduct stream that goes into the Royal Palms waterway. When this project is completed, it will be analogous to Water Treatment Plant Number One, and the minerals will go away in a lime sludge. Then there's Water Treatment Plant Three, that's also a reverse osmosis membrane softening plant. What about its concentrate stream?
Well, we have a couple of options for the concentrate stream from Water Treatment Plant Number Three. Initially, it was permitted to discharge into the intracoastal. Now, the intracoastal, we have a discharge permit allows us to put the concentrate into the intracoastal. But Water Plant Three is considerably closer to the title part of the intracoastal than Water Plant Two. But we have not discharged concentrate into the intracoastal, because with the same line of thinking that we're using at Water Treatment Plant Number Two, we're actually sending the concentrate from Plant Three to Water Treatment Plant Number One, where it gets treated with the lime softening process.
Which then, if people are following this rather convoluted thinking, why not send the concentrate from Water Treatment Plant Two to Water Treatment Plant One?
Okay, there's a couple of reasons for that. One is it's a much further distance to pump it, so that gets costly, pumping it all the way up to Water Plant One. But Water Plant One has a limitation of how much concentrate it could take, and with Water Treatment Plant Number Three operating at its current capacity, Water Treatment Plant Number One is absorbing as much concentrate as it can physically treat, unless we did modifications to Plant One.
And we pay you to have all this fun?
It's a complicated business. Everybody seems, you know, most people think all you do is pump water out of the ground and do something to it and send it to the home. Water chemistry is very, very, very tricky.
If I could piggyback on that, back to the mayor's comment about the Citizens Academy, this is one of those, I really, if you have not gone through that, what the utility can demonstrate as to all, this whole process, and obviously not just water, then you've got the other side of the wastewater. But it is really a fascinating science, chemistry, a lot of environmental issues. It is quite a process, and would encourage people to take our academy and learn more about it. It's not just a matter of turning the faucet on, there's a lot more to it.
Now, I think we've touched on most of the questions, except one. Richard, this isn't your area of expertise, but what is the anticipated bond rate? When we issue the bonds, here comes our finance director.
While he's coming up, the other question was softening, and yes, this actually, taking the minerals out gives a higher quality, better tasting water, so hopefully that question was answered, too, as far as the benefit of softening water.
Thank you. The current anticipated interest rate on the bonds that we're looking to issue in June and July is going to be somewhere between 2.5% to 3.5%. We're not quite through the bond rating process. In fact, we've got a very important meeting with Standard and Poor's on Monday. We'll be coming down to the city, and that has a lot to do with what our final interest rate will be, that and the market forces, but we anticipate somewhere between 2.5% to 3.5%.
Okay.
What's our bond rating currently, Chris?
We have an A bond rating with a stable outlook with S and P, and just slightly higher with Moody's and Fitch.
Okay. I think we've dealt with the questions. Additional counsel questions, comments, or a motion? For the attorney, do you want us a separate motion for 6A and 6B?
Yes, please.
Okay. 6A is the contract, 6B is the taking the $100,000 out of the bond proceeds. Is there a motion on Agenda Item 6A?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries that objection. 6B, is there a motion on 6B?
Move approval of Agenda Item 6B, a resolution establishing the city's intent to reimburse certain capital expenditures incurred with proceeds of future tax-exempt financing.
I second the resolution establishing the city's intent to reimburse certain capital expenditures, et cetera, et cetera.
Et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Mayor, that was for my benefit. Thank you very much.
Sounds just like an attorney. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Agenda Item Number Seven, Other Business, a reappointment of two members, Daniel Brusano and Charles Esposito, the Volunteer Firefighters Pension Fund Board. You don't have a ballot, because there are two positions, there are two incumbents, and only two people seeking reappointment. But Mr. Landon, just for the benefit of everyone, what is this Firefighters Pension Fund, and why do we have these two gentlemen on it?
Well, first of all, we have the benefit here in Palm Coast of having a combination of paid career firefighters and also a very strong volunteer firefighter group, and it's that combination that allows us to save money and provide an excellent level of service. The volunteers, one of the benefits that we provide for them is a small token pension plan that is paid for from state insurance funds. When you buy insurance, the state then collects a portion of that to go towards a statewide insurance fund that first responders, firefighters programs can use. We have chosen here to use it strictly for volunteers, but with that program, you have to have a board that oversees the, oh, just the plan, the eligibility, there's a variety of things they have to approve to meet state law, to meet financial commitments, et cetera. This board is made up of five members, two are appointed by city council, and two are appointed by the volunteer firefighters. The fifth one is chosen by those four members, so the, you know, city council appoints two, the firefighters appoint two, and then those four members appoint their fifth. And these two, and by the way, this is one of the few boards that are not required, that don't have term limits, and it's very specialized, and Chris can help you if you have any more questions, but it's really a very specialized board, and it doesn't make sense to have a whole lot of turnover, because it's not really something that impacts the community day in and day out, but oversees the fiduciary responsibility of this pension plan. Hope that helps.
We have two applicants, two positions. Mr. McGuire.
Mr. Landon, are these gentlemen susceptible to, they're agreeable to a reappointment?
Yes, they've applied for reappointment.
Okay, and how does that process work? How does a person get appointed to the Pension Fund Board?
Well, we actually advertise for anybody else that would like to be appointed and receive no other applicants, and then once we go through like any other appointment process, whether it's leisure services, or whether it's a planning board, we bring the names to you, and you make appointment for two. And once again, the other two are by the firefighters themselves.
These gentlemen are on the board now and wish to con... These gentlemen are on the board now and wish to continue on the board.
Correct.
Thank you.
So these paid positions or volunteer?
Let's open the meeting to the public, and if the public have a question about this issue. I heard a question from someone.
So these paid positions or volunteer?
Totally volunteer. So you know other public questions? Come back to council, is there a motion to appoint these two gentlemen?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that objection. This brings us to the consent agenda. Would anyone like to remove any of the items from the consent agenda?
Number eleven, please.
Number eleven, which is the ship program.
Correct.
Just for public information, could we just, just briefly go over eight?
Go over eight? Sure.
Your honor, I'd like to have number ten removed for discussion purposes only.
That leaves us number nine. Any takers for number nine? Is there a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Nine?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries that objection. Okay. Agenda Item Number Eight. Mr. Landon, why don't you give us a brief description of this?
Well, this is a resolution that the National League of Cities has requested support from, from all city councils throughout the country. Because the, there's a proposal to shift the tax burden from the national level to the local level by eliminating municipal tax bond, eliminate the tax exemption from municipal tax bonds. So if this bill passes U.S. Congress and is signed into law, then people who have municipal bonds and buy the bonds would also have to pay taxes on the income that they receive, basically the, the interest or the dividends from those bonds, which is, then would go to the federal government. So, and obviously, anybody that now would buy municipal bonds would have, would require an additional return on their investment to pay for those taxes. So in essence, it's, it's just a proposal going through Congress to try to shift the burden from local taxpayers to the national income taxpayers, if you will. And obviously, from a city standpoint, we're not, and we're not sure the, the total ramification of this, but we do know all our projects would go up, including those already in the pipeline. I believe they're talking about even starting to charge taxes for bonds that have already been, been sold, which means, you know, the, the deal is off as far as you bought these bonds a few years ago, and now all of a sudden, you're going to start paying taxes on them at the federal level. And it really is just another one of those kind of shifts from the burden from a national level to the local level, that obviously, those of us that got city running through our veins think this is very unfair and inappropriate, and really puts us in a bind as far as our financial outlook for some of our capital projects. This resolution would show support for not passing that proposed law. We would then pass it on to our representatives in Washington, D.C., and ask that they vote against this proposal. That's what this does.
And would you say that if Congress were to pass this, this will also shift the investment dollars out of the bond market into some other type of investment, therefore reducing the amount of money available for cities and municipalities?
As we know, the bond market, I think, it tipped it upside down, and yes, there'd be a lot of, it shake up things quite, quite a bit for our whole process. And, and Chris, I, you know, you know this better than I do, if you want to add to that.
Well, that, that was a good synopsis. Essentially, in the case of the city of Palm Coast, an increase in the interest rates on our bonds would cost taxpayers locally here millions of dollars more. We're not talking about small dollars over the life of bond issues, potentially millions of dollars. And which, instead, those taxes on the municipal bonds would then go to the federal government. It is a way of just shifting the tax burden. I'm not sure everybody really realizes what that means when they hear the federal government is looking to eliminate the tax exemption on municipal bonds, what it really means to local governments. It's very important to us, as I mentioned earlier, we're talking about interest rates of two and a half to three and a half percent on the money that we borrow, which is very, very low, and that would be significantly affected to be thirty percent or more higher, and does add up to millions of dollars.
Thank you. Since we did remove this item from the consent agenda and from the public, which should be heard on Agenda Item Number Eight. This is simply a resolution of the city of Palm Coast, joining with every other city in the nation, I believe, urging our federal legislators not to take this action. Anyone wish to be heard? Signee on approach the podium, come back to city council. Motion.
I wish to be heard.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Landon, you've, you've indicated a letter to Senator Bill Nelson. Are we also going to appeal to Senator Marco Rubio?
Sure.
Good.
Yes, let's just answer yes. We can do that, if that's what you desire, that's kind of up to whatever you'd like to...
I think we should cover all the bases on this.
Yes. I think the letter was intended to be just a sample. There will be others that we will work through, but the letter was really just intended to be a sample.
And ultimately, our resolution will go to the National League of Cities. They will compile it with resolutions from all the other cities in the nation, and they will carry this to Washington.
Yeah, that proposed letter was not from us, it was from the National League of Cities as a, as a sample.
Okay. Mr. Maguire, would you care to offer a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries that exemption. Agenda Item Number Ten, Resolution Improving Annual Uniform Rental Contract with UniFirst Corporation. Mr. Maguire?
I am the nattering nabob of negativism here, to paraphrase Spiro Agnew. But my understanding is, is that these uniforms are not made in USA. How much would it cost us to purchase uniforms that are made in the United States, and will our budget stand it?
We, we have looked at it. We received two bids. Both of the bidders, their standard uniforms are made in Mexico, is what we have found out. The second bidder, the, the high bidder, because there's only two, was about forty percent higher, so our costs would go up forty percent if you just went with their standard uniforms.
And they're still made in Mexico.
They're still made in Mexico. The low bidder, UniFirst Corporation, doesn't have a "made in the USA" option, but the second bidder, or the high bidder, Centos, does for an additional twenty percent. So if you want to pursue this, right now, the information we have is that it would be about a sixty-five percent increase in our cost. You would have to go back out to bid and put that in the specifications, you'd have to reject these bids and go back out to bid to get a firm number, because these are just estimates I'm giving you, because that was not a part of the specification of, of the bids.
Well, what's in the budget? I mean, what, what are we budgeting for this?
Currently, all the departments for this year is fifty-seven thousand. So, you know, sixty percent of that is another thirty, thirty-five thou, thirty-seven thousand, thank you.
Sixty-five.
In, in addition to that, so the cost would be significant from a percentage basis.
Thank you.
Bill, I want to thank you for asking that question at our workshop last week, because I had, you know, a really deep thought about this, because it's a, it really is a good There is a point where we have to say, you know, enough is enough, if we're, if you're going to make a change, if you have an opportunity to change things, you, you have to just take a stand and do it. Sixty-five percent is, is huge. I had a great talk with some people at lunch today about it. Again, thank you, because it was a really nice spirited conversation.
Thanks for the lunch.
I, I wish that our low bidder came back at twenty-five percent, well, I wish our low bidder would have been able to do it at "made in the USA." But even at the twenty-five percent, I, I would have supported, supported it, because I think you got to make a stand somewhere, and if, if enough people make a stand and bring it home, then the prices will actually come down. But at sixty-five percent, I don't know, that's a, that is a big number.
That's too much. I mean, it's, it's, we do our best to try to create jobs and bring work into the city, and this philosophy extends to our United States economy, you know. We, wherever we can, we should purchase anything that's made in the USA, as opposed to something that's being imported from overseas, unless the cost is just completely prohibitive, as it is in this case. Thank you, Jason.
Just similar comment. Quite a few years ago, city council passed a local preference ordinance, where we said that when a project is bid, we will give a three percent credit, if you will, to local businesses. In other words, if there are a business here in Flagler County and a business in Orange County, if the Flagler County bid is no more than three percent higher, we will credit, we will give them the, the bid because of this local preference option. Why do we pick three percent? Why not fifty percent? Why not ten percent? Well, the discussion at the time was, because we're not spending our dollars, we're spending our taxpayer dollars, and our job is to be as frugal as we possibly can. The feeling at the time was that three percent was a sufficiently small margin that you could offer that little incentive to local businesses. But, Jason, twenty-five or sixty-five percent is... Anyway, that's the answer. Would anyone from the public wish to be heard on Agenda Item Number Ten?
Jack, Cal Palm Coast. What would be the difference if we gave our employees a, a uniform allowance? In other words, buy it and then maintain it yourself, and we give them a uniform allowance per year, per month, or whatever? What would be the difference in, in the cost? You know? And let me, let me just say this. The reason why everything is done overseas is greed.
Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Norman Weiskopf, and I just happen to be interested in this. I'm just wondering why you need uniforms in the first place? Why can't somebody just, the, the workers just use regular street clothes to do their jobs? And I think it would be cheaper for the, the city and for the person that's using the clothes. And he came up with a similar, kind of a question that I was going to ask you, some type of allowance for the working people. I think that's a good idea. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
My name is Al Terrells. I don't know who the uniforms are for, so could you explain to me, you know?
Uniformity is great. My only question is, since the question for bidding was never asked about American-made products, is it too late in the contract to go back and request that from each and every person? As you said, one person already put it in, that's twenty percent more. If the first contractor had that option, and it was twenty percent more, would it make a difference? Buying US is US. It, it's a movement, and it's, you know, buying overseas is throwing our money over there and it's coming back to bite us. And it's a good deal to consider by "made in America." But since you haven't asked the uniform companies about American stuff, one of them only put it in there, and the other one did not establish any dialogue about it because it was not requested, you only get what you ask for. So please ask for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker. So you don't approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, come back. Let's take those questions, not quite in the same order. First of all, who are the uniforms for? What city employees benefit, get, use, wear these uniforms?
There are three primary departments that have the uniformed service. One of them is the fire department, another one is our, well, it's actually Public Works, and then Public Works has the two divisions of utility, water and sewer, and then streets and parks maintenance. Can I, can I keep going with these?
Please.
Then, so, as far as an allowance, a couple of things that are important. One of them is, this isn't just buying the uniforms, it's actually a uniformed service. These people work in the sewer. And I don't know about you, but if my spouse worked in the sewer, I wouldn't want to bring home the uniform. Okay? These people work in the middle of the night in a trench that, you know, on the water main break, you don't want them bringing it home. So it is a laundry service. Firefighters think about the things that they deal with, you don't want them taking it home. So this isn't just buying, and so the allowance does, does not work.
Mr. Landon, in addition to that, you know, when, when you offer this, you're, you're making the job package attractive to people that you want to come to work for the city and stay.
Right.
So, so, you know, in, in the interest of, of getting the, the better caliber workers here, this is a perk that you offer.
Yes. The other thing, from the community standpoint, as far as not requiring a uniform at all, some of these people work in your backyards. You know, some of the people, you don't really want just anybody wandering in your backyard, you need to know, or your front yard in the community, you need to know that they're a city employee, and, and this is part of their identification, to make sure that, that they have that. So it, it actually is important for the field people from a variety of standpoint. And, and yes, you could say it's a perk, but I, some of them would be more than happy to wear their T-shirt and their Budweiser cap and that type of thing, but that, that's not, that would not be appropriate for, for our, for, for our employees out in the neighborhoods, et cetera. The, did I get all the questions?
Well, the last question is, and I think maybe a little explanation here. We went out for bid for uniformed services. There only two people bid at all.
Right.
The, the question on "Made in America" was not in the bid specs, but when Mr. Maguire raised the question, you then went back to them and said, is this an option?
Right. Yes, exactly. And so that's why I said that if you want to make this a requirement, we would have to put it in the bid, bid specs. The low bidder has said they don't offer this as a, as a possibility, they would not...
So if we made it a mandatory component of the bid...
They would not bid.
UniFirst, or whatever, what's the company? UniFirst. They would not bid.
Right.
So you'd have one bidder.
Right. And then we went to that bidder and said, okay, you know, is it a five percent, ten percent bump if you offer that? And then that's when, first of all, they're already forty, forty-five percent higher. And then they said, yes, they have a specialty plant, I think it was in California, that when you want specialty items, that's where they would make them, and they could make the uniforms there, but they have a twenty, twenty, twenty-five percent markup if they come out of that plant. So that's where we got, so, the gentleman's right, you would have to go back out to bid, but you may get another bidder, but it would be a, you know, whole, based on our information, the, the price would be substantially higher. And it's a service and not just buying it, so then that, that limits your bidders too because of that.
Can you get three bids? I mean, one bid for the closing?
Excuse me, excuse me. No, sorry. No public comment at this point. I'm not positioned to make a motion, that has to be from council, but I'm going to suggest that if we do pass this motion, we communicate with both of these firms and say that this is an issue that is very important to us. This is an annual contract?
This, I believe, is a three-year contract.
Well, I, I think we need to go on record, Mr. Maguire, good point, that, that we would prefer to see this as an option from, from, from everyone.
We, we've already been in contact, but we can send them a letter and let them know that more...
I'd like to go on record and say that this is important to us.
If city council agrees with that, we, I think it'd be best... If City Council agrees with that, I think it'd be best to come from the mayor of your community to put that kind of weight behind it.
Well, the resolution is for an annual rental contract.
It's an annual rental contract, but it is for a three-year term, I believe is. Help me out, guys. Is it a three-year term?
The amount is annual.
Let me...
It's an annual amount, but it's a three-year contract.
Yes, it's a, I have it here. Initial three-year term with an additional two-year options is a standard contract that we have. The annual amount of fifty-seven thousand is just for our estimate for one year.
You know, Your Honor, as an aside to this, without digressing, there are people in the city of Palm Coast that provide printing. They make nice-looking shirts that I bought, some of them. And there are several companies that do this. It would be nice if they wanted to get a piece of this action. That could be an attractive segue to what they're already doing in terms of printing T-shirts and things of that nature. And it'd be nice to see somebody like Joe Roy maybe approach them with this "what do you think?"
Embroidering the, or the stamps and those type of...
I'm talking about providing the uniforms, because, you know, the city has a, I believe still has an option where if you want to make a capital improvement in your business, that the city can help you with that.
Right. Yes, and I agree with you in our T-shirts, like for Arbor Day.
Yeah.
And those, we all do those locally. We always get those locally. These are uniforms for firefighters. I mean, there's some specialty items. Plus, once again, I got stressed, it's a service. It's actually the cleaning, the bringing them back, and so it's not just buying the uniform, it's actually the annual service.
All I'm saying here, Mr. Landon, is thinking out of the box a little bit, is if I owned one of these companies, and I knew that the city had a contract that was worth more than fifty thousand dollars a year, I think I might be interested in knowing what would it take for me to do these things and provide this service and make a profit.
Yep. I understand.
But I'm a greedy guy.
Okay. Any other discussion on Agenda Item Number Ten? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? With council concurrence, I will work with staff, draft a letter to both of these, and if I can find any other uniform rental companies to kind of share your thoughts, that we would like to see them partner locally to the extent possible.
Absolutely. Please do it.
Happy to do that. Agenda Item Number Eleven. I think, Mr. DiLorenzo, this was yours.
Yes.
This is a resolution for approving an amended Local Housing Assistance Plan for the State Housing Initiatives Program, also known as SHIP.
Thank you. I actually don't have any issue with the interlocal agreement itself. It's actually a very good interlocal agreement. It's the city and the county working together to provide one service so there isn't a redundancy of services, and we thank the county for doing that for us. But I did want to make a comment about the legislature and SHIP itself. For the fifth consecutive year, the legislature has failed to appropriate any money into the state housing initiative partnership, better known as the SHIP program, from the Sadowski Housing Trust Fund. Although the law stipulates that revenue from the documentary stamps paid on real estate transactions to be dedicated to state and local housing trust funds, the legislature has again swept that money into the general budget. The Sadowski Housing Coalition, a nonpartisan group of twenty-five diverse statewide organizations, estimates that the documentary fee will produce some two-hundred million in revenue this coming fiscal year, and Flagler County and Palm Coast's distribution of those estimated two-hundred million is seven-hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Those monies pay for public-private partnerships to build, rehabilitate, and preserve affordable housing for poverty-stricken people and moderate-income workers such as our nurses and firefighters and public works, as well as special-needs residents. This is not a public housing program. The coalition estimates the two-hundred million would create almost fifteen thousand jobs and total state economic impact of around one-point-five billion. And I thank you for listening, but this is something that's important, and the legislature failed us on this one once again. Thank you.
But, Mr. DiLorenzo, what's your recommended action?
Well, I would...
I mean, what should we do faced with what we've got?
Well, please contact your legislature and tell them to don't sweep the housing trust fund, but it's too late, they did it already. The two-hundred million dollars is already gone and in the general fund.
Next year's another year.
Would you be interested in framing a letter over the mayor and the council's signature to send to the...
I would be thrilled if this council would support that.
Your Honor, I recommend that Mr. DiLorenzo be requested to do that.
Since you seem to have a lot of data, if you'll draft the letter and pass it to the administrator, then he'll share it with council, and after council's looked at it, I'd be happy to sign it.
Great. Thank you very much.
Meanwhile, we have the agenda item. Since it was removed from the agenda, "An Infamous Public Wish to Be Heard on the Interlocal Agreement Between the City and Flagler County for Administration of Ship Funds." It's an interlocal agreement between the city and Flagler County. Flagler County already has staff that administers these kinds of programs, so rather than Palm Coast creating its own department or hiring somebody to do this, we are simply making an agreement with the county that they will do it for us. An Infamous Public Wish to Be Heard on this item. Seeing nobody approach...
I thought it was about the state and wasn't part of the city. Okay.
I'm sorry, sir?
The way it read here, it was about the state, not the Flagler and the state fund.
The resolution before us is an agreement, an interlocal agreement between the city of Palm Coast and Flagler County. So we've had this agreement in place for a number of years. The county has staff that does this, so they do it for the county, or for the city, rather. Just another way of where partnerships can reduce overhead, can reduce costs. Is there a motion on Agenda Item?
Move approval of Agenda Item Number Eleven, a resolution approving amended Local Housing Assistance Plan for the State Housing Initiatives Program.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And if you will prepare that letter, give it to Mr. Landon, and he will share it with council, then I'll be happy to sign it on behalf of City Council. This brings us to the public participation portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to be heard on any item not on today's agenda, this is your opportunity. Please come up to the podium, give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes.
Well, good evening again, Mayor and Council, and to our friends and neighbors in Palm Coast, good evening, and especially to those that have dogs as pets. They say that eighty percent of the homes here in Palm Coast have a pet. It's a high figure, but I read it in one of the newspapers. In any case, I just wanted to mention, I'm Norman Weiskopf, by the way, that I was here last week, last month, and we discussed the dog park, and nothing was done. And I'm kind of upset about that because it's a simple project to make the dog park as beautiful as possible. I think it should be made beautiful. I mean, it is part of Palm Coast. Everything else seems to be working pretty well. I'm confused, a little disappointed, and I don't know why there's nothing being done about the dog park. The ground, the salt, the potassium is there, it's fine, and the sulfur is fine, and grass will grow. Last month, somebody pointed out that it might not grow there, and I'm sure it will grow. The buzz on the street is that everything grows in Palm Coast, so I think it would probably, grass would probably grow in the dog park. A number of years ago, before I was here, before Mr. Landon was here, and I'm not sure about you, Mr. Nats, you might have been here, there was another mayor and another council, and they put in a dog park in Holland Park, and they maintained it very well. And since that group of officials left, the dog park has just gone to pot. It's just terrible-looking, and it's part of our community. It should be maintained before new projects go into effect. So I think something should be done about the dog park, and I think it should be done soon, now, as soon as possible. There's no reason that this dog park isn't as beautiful as you can get a dog park. It should be the most beautiful dog park in the world, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, everything else here in Palm Coast is pretty nice, and I think the dog park should be on that list also. So that's all I have to say. We'd like to see a beautiful-looking dog park, and I think the city owes it to the people that live here to have a nice-looking dog park. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
You know, talking about cutting expenses, everything that's on this agenda, you went over at your, at your last week's meeting. Why do you have a workshop, and then you do the same identical thing at the regular meeting? What you're doing is, it's all repetition. You say it at the workshop, it's a presentation at the workshop, and then the same thing comes up before you again. That's wasted time, and wasted money, and wasted effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Richard Dinnell. Live in Palm Coast. I'm one of, I represent some of the handicapped that use the dog parks, especially James Holland. My dog goes over there quite a bit. For most of us, our dogs are just pets. For me, I have a dog here that's valued at about thirty-five thousand dollars with education and training that's involved in it. The first year I had her, we went to James Holland so that I could get my dog exercised and maintain her health, and I spent an additional thousand dollars the first year of my veterinary bills because of the soil and the dirt. It's just in such disarray over there that my dog, every time I go, I'm going to the vet to get additional antibiotics and medications. So I have the vet bills, I have medication bills. If I don't take the dog over and get her mental health, her physical health, everything, just, this dog needs to be able to work for me and do what she needs to do. The other thing I have, I think about is, a lot of the things you're trying to do for the youth is a wonderful thing here. Let's increase the population. That population may come in with pets. We've got some of the most beautiful ballparks that I've ever seen, and for a city, and when you go to the dog park, wow, what do we have? A dirt bowl. I mean, it's just, it's such a... You guys have all been there. I had met the animal control officer over at the one ballfield I was playing with my dog, and I heard excuses why I couldn't play with her there, because she was on the field, she was in a drainage area. Then I had heard that workers complained. When I, once again, talked to some of the workers, nobody seemed to be upset over the fact that I was playing in the back of one of the fields, I'm sorry, in the back of one of the drainage areas where there's storage and it's a water runoff area. And then the animal control officer also mentioned to me that there's other people that complain. And we looked around the whole big, wide-open complex, and there wasn't another soul in there. And then finally, the reason that he said I couldn't go over there was because my dog wasn't on a five-foot leash. I'd like to bring up that the city last year, at the dog, the Paws for Dogs Day, or whatever it is, you folks gave out leashes that are retractable, a twenty-five-foot leash, which is against your own leash law here in the city. The rules do read that the dog should be under control, and I explained to the animal control officer that when she is in training, she is on electronic collar, which she responds to. The whole time I was having a discussion with the animal control officer, she totally ignored him. But the point being that I can't take my dog to a park where she gets sicker and ruins her health. I have to worry about when I'm over there, do I slip and fall off the sidewalk? If I'm sitting in a chair, does it fall off the edge of the gazebo? It's a beautiful sidewalk to walk in. After it rains, there's six inches of debris all over it, so it's not safe for anybody to walk in, let alone a handicap person. While we're sitting there in our chairs, you got to be careful so that you don't drop off the back and fall over backwards because there's such a hardy drop-off. I've heard people, other complain about the dust from the asthma. It affects the dogs also. Everybody talks about the runoff and the erosion. Seems like all the problems that we have over there can be fixed with one very simple thing: Put down some Bahia sod.
Fifteen seconds. Fifteen seconds, sir?
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Jimmy Epps from Palm Coast. I was happy to hear the ratification on the resolution of the soccer players and the kids that are playing soccer, but you all know who comes with the soccer players and families. They're dogs. I was at Wadsworth during the week when they had soccer games and tournaments, and that park over there was full. You talk about hotels, you talk about bottom line, money. What puts people in hotels? Check a pet-friendly hotel against a regular hotel around here. See the difference there. I hear you talking about uniforms and a valid sense of consideration for your workers getting dirty. Uniforms. Well, we have dogs that go to the park every day, and we have to clean them, and they come home with this. Not only do they come home dirty, and it's embarrassing, we have parvo going around. How long is it going to be before we acquire this over here? And you talk about people coming in to play soccer, play ball, you talk about visitors. When they go to a dog park like this, they don't leave Palm Coast with a sense of meaning, a sense of a place they'd like to be, a place they'd like to come back to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Al Terros. I don't know if the school budget problem is a city council issue. Would I discuss that with the city, I mean, Board of Education?
You can certainly share your thoughts, but no, the school board is totally separate.
Okay. Okay. I have a question regarding, a lot of times, we have different organizations, like the, those who created the tennis court, and then the arts league people, and now you went to soccer fields. It seems that a lot of times, it's going to be a private, it's like partnership and public, but a lot of times, the residents wind up paying, footing the bill. You know, a lot of times, you tell the residents that it's going to be a private, they're going to do it, but then sometimes it doesn't, it falls through, and then the cost is put on the residents. So my concern's about issues like that. Anytime you're creating anything, I want to be concerned that you think about the residents before you just say yes to everything. And then a lot of times, all these many things that you have, the senior citizens are left out, like we don't use soccer fields, we don't use a lot of these different things. It's like the kids, but you have senior citizens living here, and you have kids, so you have to be concerned with the residents, all the residents, not just everything for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Charles Ebert, Palm Coast. I have a problem with our lift stations or our pump stations that we have around the city. One of them being Oak King, Hidden Lakes, and Town Center. This last rain that we had, I don't know how many gallons of raw sewage came out of that pump station, but it brought in a septic tank trucker to pump some of the stuff, as they're pumping the five thousand gallons at a time, out of that pump. Now, I don't know where that sub-pump draws its wastewater from, and where the storm drain water comes in with that sewage, but Hidden Lakes Development is behind that, and I saw workers cleaning up, and I guess they put out some lime and calcium and so forth to disinfect the ground from the pollutants that were there, but where did some of the water that went into that lake that's right next to the pump station? Now, Hidden Lakes right now has about, I believe, approximately about a hundred homes, and in the Phase Two and Phase Three that's coming in, it will probably cap out about five hundred homes. Now, if that sub-pump can't handle what we're doing now, what's going to happen in the future? And I don't know if utilities... And I don't know if utilities report this to EPA as far as how many gallons of raw sewage is coming out of that station. So, that's something that we need to look at, too, because you're talking about contamination. We have a trail that goes across there, and I didn't go out too far because I couldn't even get across the spell. And I'm, like Mr. Lander said a while back, I'm one of these empty lot owners, and I was trying to build into Hidden Lakes. So, in that pump station, I've washed it, and I didn't take notice until this last rain, and it's raw sewage that just pours out of that manhole. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. I just want to, you hear a lot of complaints, but you're not going to get one from me on this particular thing. About three weeks ago, my pep tank light went off, and it started buzzing and buzzing and buzzing, and I called up for emergency, and a young fellow came within a half an hour, and he says to me, you know, this thing has been in here a while. He says, I don't know, I don't think it's the pump. So, he pulls the thing out, he pulls out the weights and the balances and this, that, and the other, and all of that, and he says, oh, I don't know whether I have it on the truck. And then he starts putting this together, and that together, and this together, and that together. Well, to make a long story short, he did the job, and as John knows, and this one knows, Adams, about my property, which gets flooded on the side, I get a lake. Well, with this last rain and everything, it has gone down. I got the lake, but it didn't last as long as it used to. It used to last three weeks to a month before it would go down and everything, and then they had built up the pep tank. So, all I can say is thank God for our workers, and this particular young fellow who was talking about going back up north, because of the weather, didn't agree with him, and I said, you look pretty good now. Take care.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor and councilman, it seems to me you all are doing a pretty good job. That's what I think, but I got a little-
Could you give us your name, sir, for the record?
What's that? Oh, Raul Troche.
Thank you, sir.
And I have another potential little job here for you. I'm going to go ahead and read this so I can stay within my time, all right? But I recently had my business shut down and received a $22,419 fine for not having a $50 workman's comp exemption. It has been my belief that when you got incorporated, it was automatic. I now found out that this is not the case, and with almost no exception, other handymen and even licensed contractors, who I've spoken to, were also ignorant that they needed to have this. Now, according to Florida statutes, the legislators say that their intent is not to find people, but rather to have them come into compliance. However, right now, the state will not allow me to come into compliance without paying thousands of dollars in fines and agreeing to pay the remainder of the fines within five years. Also, according to their laws, they're not even to give you a license until you have proof of coverage. Yet in this city and in this county building departments, they do not inform you or check that out. Now, I went down to see Ramona Zabasky, the county licensing manager, and mentioned that to her, and she said she was not responsible to inform people of the law, yet she teaches a law class for contractors. And in the Florida statutes, it does say that they are to conform your coverage or exemption prior to giving you the license. So, I would just suggest that you please make our city employees aware of this law so that they are in compliance and can let people know, and hopefully, this will prevent other people from having their lives, businesses, fortunes, and reputations from being destroyed. And I would just like to leave a copy of this for you, John.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Next speaker. Signee on approach to podium, we close the public portion of the meeting. Mr. Landon, let's take the dog park issue first. Can you give us some insight? I know the issue has always been that there is not adequate water to water the grass, so on and so on and so forth. Any progress in that direction?
Yes. Well, first of all, you know, it's, I can remember, two, three years ago, we actually had a rededication of the dog park because the city went in and redid the dog park and got a lot of accolades from many of the dog owners that used it. You may have recalled at that time, those involved in it, that our staff who was responsible for maintaining it said that, well, we've done this before, and because of the slope, the water condition of the well, which has high salt, it won't last long, and that's exactly what happened. So, we have attempted to head in a direction to do a permanent fix because everybody that I know agrees that it needs to be fixed, and so the whole concept is, instead of just keep putting a Band-Aid on it, it doesn't stop the bleeding, it just keeps bleeding, and wasting money, was a more permanent fix. First of all, we have, in this year's capital improvement plan, is to get reused water to the park so that we can water the grass and therefore keep it alive. Then, we also have two other options for city council to consider as far as capital improvements. One of them is, is just put down sod as is for this year, but I think you all know that we actually have in our capital improvement plan to redo Holland Park and make improvements, including a more permanent situation for the dog park, and, because it has other improvements that needs to happen to it, and you hear about those. Those are under final design right now, and will be presented to you here soon as we get into the budget season and the capital improvement budget for incorporating into the capital improvement plan for next year. And then that is, will have to be a priority decision on city council as to whether or not you want to incorporate that into next year's capital improvement budget or not. In the meantime, the reuse line is, you know, I'm not sure what the schedule is right now, but I can tell you it's in this year's budget, and we have the dollars for the reuse line, which is a critical element for the whole improvement. All I can do at this point is ask for some patience from the dog owners, because we know we need to make improvements, throw in sod out there. You know, my maintenance people tell me it's a waste of money, it's going to die, and they've been right before. I see no reason why they wouldn't be right again. So, we are trying to come up with a permanent solution for this, but it is going to take some dollars to do that.
Okay. The question on why do we have this duplicative effort? We have workshops, then we have the same issues brought up. I'll take the blame for that, because when the city was first incorporated, you had two business meetings a month and one workshop, and in order to give council members enough advance notice, enough opportunity to ask questions and have those questions answered, the workshops were hours and hours and hours. In fact, I can remember meeting in what was the old community center for a meeting, then adjourning to the old library for the rest of the meeting because the room was filled. I was accustomed in my previous life as a city councilman in New Jersey to workshopping everything before it went to a public meeting. So, you had plenty of time to ask questions, get answers, have staff come back and answer your questions. Anytime city council wants to cut back to one workshop a month, you're more than welcome.
Your Honor-
But you plan on a longer lunch.
Your Honor, if I could tag on to that, the discussions that we have as a council in these public meetings, whether they be workshops or a public business meeting such as tonight, can't be had any other way. The discussion that Mr. DiLorenzo and I had, if that had taken place anywhere other than this forum, we could be behind bars. The Sunshine Laws prohibit us from discussing items that may come up on the agenda and require a vote anywhere but in a public meeting where minutes are taken. So, if it seems redundant, the alternative is some of us wearing a striped suit, I guess, and that doesn't really appeal to me too much.
Thank you.
Mr. DiLorenzo. Just add that, I've thought about this. Workshops, I think workshops are good for decisions. I don't think they're easy for the, as easy for the public, because when we get here, we've already talked a lot, we've, you know, worked through stuff, we've asked staff a lot of questions, and it seems like sometimes, there's just a lot of formality that happens here. But as far as the decision-making process goes, having the workshops and being able to spend as much time as we want to ask those questions, and then having that lead time, if there are, if we have questions that cannot be answered immediately by staff, that gives them the time to get back to us and follow up, and that leads to better decisions. And I understand that's difficult for the public because their workshops are in the morning, and, you know, there's limited space, and there's no public comment, but from a decision-making process, I think it's the best way to go.
The classic example was Mr. McGuire's question about American-made uniforms. Well, it took staff several days to research that and get back to us.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't do the workshops, and you only have the business sessions, then the public will say, why don't you do your work before you come here? And that's the bottom line. So, the workshops are necessary.
If I could put a plug in myself, Mayor, is that the other benefit is transparency for the public? Because I lots of times tell people, if you want to know about the issue before you come and speak, and you want to hear the facts about it and the discussion, the workshop gives the public the opportunity to learn about the issues before they come here and make a presentation or before city council. So, it actually benefits the people who are interested in the issue to hear it all before, so not only does staff give an opportunity to get more information, answer city council's questions, so does the public get that opportunity, too. So, it's good for the public also.
And just a comment, several meetings ago, a member of the audience stood up and was critical of city council because we asked questions about an item that was either a resolution or an ordinance, and the comment from the public was, you shouldn't even be discussing this if you don't know the answers. Many times, council members will ask a question, reiterating a question that was asked at a workshop so that the public can hear the answer from staff. Anyway, enough of that. Yes, the issue of public-private partnerships, we do everything we can to avoid a situation where, if it fails, that the cost comes back on a taxpayer. This government, City of Palm Coast, Flagler County, the state of Florida, no matter who you are, except maybe the federal government, operates under strict budget guidelines. We don't like to lose money. We want to make the best use of our money every time, so we make the best judgments that we can make with the information we've got at the time. Mr. Adams, how about coming up and telling us a little bit about lift stations, what the issues there are?
If I could request, Richard, that you expand that discussion and do an overview as to how we handle the storm, not just, start off with wastewater for the gentleman, but then also our drainage system, et cetera. I mean, we received, I've heard reports anywhere from nine to 11 inches, which is a huge amount of water in just a couple of days, so how did our system do?
Right. First of all, you're absolutely correct. Just in the 24 hours from Thursday morning till Friday morning, most areas of Palm Coast received over seven inches. It continued to rain after that. We got more rain on Friday and even on through till Saturday morning, so the, it ranges anywhere from nine to 14 inches or so. That's, we've had tropical storms and hurricanes that didn't produce that amount of water. I don't think people realize how much water actually fell on Palm Coast. Anytime you have that much water in that amount of time, all of your drainage systems are taxed to the max, and you have street flooding and areas where the water rises to the highest level in the swale. When water rises to the highest level in the swale, it starts finding holes, like clean-out caps in people's yard that got mowed over, and they're covered with grass, and you don't know that it's there, but when the water reaches it, it pours down the sewer system. The sewer system is designed to take on domestic sewer, it's not designed for stormwater. However, when you have these kinds of stormwater events, stormwater does enter the system. The manholes in the road are not waterproof, water goes in those manholes. When the groundwater comes up, the system's pipes can leak into the sewer system and mostly the clean-out caps and things like that. So, any, any kind of sewer system taxed with that much rainwater has issues. We have about 150 pump stations, and those pump stations all start to pump to their capacity and reach high-level alarms when we get to the high level due to all the stormwater takes on. That's when we mobilize our crews with tank trucks, and in this case, we call in tank trucks from out of town as well, vendors that come in and assist us, and we do go to places like Old Kings Road Pump Station and pump out 4,000 gallons at a time to help those pumps keep up with all that stormwater they take on. In this case, we did have a couple of overflows, Old Kings Road being one of them. It was all contained on site, nothing entered any bodies of water, and that is because our crews were out there with those tank trucks pumping. And then once, once the event is over, any kind of cleanup with lime to disinfect is how it's all handled. That's how any sewer system is treated, and in some areas, obviously, they're much worse off than we are. 10 years ago, before the city acquired the system, we would have had multiple spills. We have worked very hard, the city council has approved a considerable amount of resources to improve our system. You see the notices about smoke testing, that's how we find leaks in the system. We've done a lot of capital improvement projects to increase capacity of these pump stations. Old Kings Road is actually in our five-year plan, it's about a $2.5 billion project, so after, I think it's in the year 2015, we'll be completely replacing that pump station and the forest maintenance connected to it. As far as the, what the crews did Friday night, they, we had quite a few people working well after their quitting time in the stormwater maintenance side. We had, the initial deluge causes a lot of debris to come out of the ditches, get washed to the drain culverts and inlet basins, and all that debris all flows in. We call the initial flush, clogs up storm grates. Our crews are out there with waiters, getting out, cleaning out these grates so that the water can flow and keep it from flooding the streets. Crews worked all through the day, all the guys that normally dig ditches and do those kinds of maintenance activities, all working on responding to the storm. Down trees, because the winds kicked up, we had trees in the streets that we were clearing and hauling, and we were running around with our chippers and cleaning up that debris all through that rainy vent, all day, all day Friday, well into the night Friday evening. And the sewer crews were working around the clock, we put them on shifts, so they worked around the clock through Sunday morning. So, I think for the amount of rainfall that we received, I think we fared quite well, and that is really the teamwork that the crews put together. We had office staff that prepared meals. We had chili for the crews on Friday afternoon after they'd been out in the rain all day long. They were able to come in, and the office staff had prepared some chili for them, and the next day, we were getting them some pizzas and things like that so that they could work around the clock.
Mayor, if I could add a couple of other things- Mayor, if I could add a couple of other things. Richard, because the question came out as far as the sanitary sewer, commented about a lot of the improvements. And I know that in the R section and P section, we used to have blowouts. We used to have a lot more spills. Many, many of those would have occurred if it wasn't for the capital improvements. But I would also say the stormwater system, I didn't hear of any blowouts of pipes. Didn't hear any blowout of our wiers. You know, a lot of, I saw pictures of swell rehab projects where the water stayed in the swale or just barely got into the street. That would have been a major street flooding in the past. We, and all of the flooding you see on the national news, people would listen to the amount of rain. Four inches, six inches, eight inches. Seldom do you get up in the 10 and 12. But if you do, it's up to the stop sign. We're very fortunate here not to have that. And also, working hard on these problem areas because we know we have some of these problem areas, but we've addressed many of them. We have more to go. And that's part of our capital improvement plan to do that. So I, my second night here in Palm Coast over six years ago, 10 inches that night too. And I can tell you, we've come a long ways in those six years.
Thank you. Mr. Di Lorenzo, do you want to handle the question about workers' comp exemptions? Since I know you were at a seminar just recently. Since I was there too? For the public. If you're an employee of a company, you're supposed to be covered in a workman's compensation. The state of Florida says that if you are one of no more than four individuals who are owners of a company and who own at least 10% of the stock of that company, you can apply for workman's comp exemption. If you have more than five people, no workers' comp. If you don't own stock in a company, if you're not an owner, if you're really just an employee, you're not entitled to workers' compensation exemption. All licensure of businesses is done either by the state of Florida or by the Flagler County Contractors Review Board. The City of Palm Coast does not issue any licenses whatsoever. What we do collect is a business receipt tax, which is just that. It's a tax for doing business. It does not attest to your capabilities, your competence. It does, all it simply says is that you're in business and you've paid your business tax receipt. Once upon a time, that fee was called a business license receipt. And people would say, "Oh, yes, I'm fully licensed because I've paid my $50, whatever it is, to the City of Palm Coast." The state changed the nomenclature, so it's a business tax receipt. The reason I know this is because Mr. Di Lorenzo and I were at a seminar, if you will, that was conducted by the Rebecca...
Ramona.
Ramona.
Zabacki.
Zabacki, who is the director of the county licensing board. And she did a presentation on what her role is, what the role of workman's comp is. The reality, sir, is if you own your own business and you own at least 10% of the stock in the business and there's no more than four of you, you can get a workers' compensation exemption. But that is a state function, not a city function. Now, as to whether, and this is a question I don't see... Nestor might know. But when you come to the city to apply for your business tax receipt, do we inquire about licensure? Do we inquire about workers' compensation?
Yeah, certainly, we'll do a search of the existing state or county licenses. And I, as I recall, I believe part of the annual registration also includes receipt of workers' comp.
Is that us or is that the county that does the workers' comp?
As I recall, our permitting for our contractor database will do a request of the, just to see the card.
Okay.
But we have no enforcement, no, that, as you said, Mayor, that's all with the state investigating the workers' comp. And any fines, any of that typically is at the state level.
It's either the state or the county.
Or the local licensing, yeah, the registered contractors.
Just to amplify a little bit, one of the reasons that Mr. Di Lorenzo and I were at this seminar conducted by the county, it was the topic was unlicensed contractors. And the goal of everybody is, when you, a resident, hire somebody to do work, if the work that you want to have done requires a license, the goal is to have a licensed contractor do that work. Some of the things are obvious, plumbing, electrical, things like that. You just automatically assume that there has to be a license. But there are a number of trades or occupations that you might not think would require a license, but in fact, they do. So the goal of this presentation was to help educate the public as to what licensure means, who gets it, who needs it, and why you should ask for it. Something that the public needs to look into when you hire anybody, the simple question is, "Do you have a license?" And if there's a question in your mind, "Does this person require a license?", call Ramona at the county and say, "Does somebody replacing the windows in my house have to have a license?" And she'll be able to give you an answer, yes or no. And then your job is to say to the contractor, "Show me your license. Show me proof of licensure." Because here's the interesting thing, and Ramona brought this out. If you hire an unlic, and this is a caution to the contractor, the workman. If somebody hires you to do work and you're not properly licensed, they don't have to pay you. You can have completed the job, done it correctly, but without a license, you have no recourse. They say, "Well, I'm not gonna pay you." So if you're doing work that requires a license, get a license. And I think that completes the questions from the residents. This brings us to discussion by city council of matters not on the agenda. Mr. McGuire, we'll start with you, sir.
Well, since two of us sitting on this board are diehard hockey fans, I just want to know from the gentleman with his Detroit Red Wings shirt, if they still throw octopus on the ice?
We sure do.
You're gonna have to explain that to me.
Let the gentleman from Detroit explain it to you because I don't, never did understand what you caught out of it, but they do it.
Is it just a tradition that the Detroit Red Wings throw the octopi out there? And they're not at the point that you get to spend a couple hours in jail now if you get caught.
That's it, Mr.?
Well, I'm a St. Louis Blues fan. All we throw on the ice is Budweisers.
Mr. Lewis, bail us out.
No comment.
Mr. Di Lorenzo.
I'm a Rangers fan, so I think all we throw out on the ice is insults.
I'm a Red Wings fan. All we do is win.
Very good. Mr. Jergel, that tops it. Mr. Ferguson.
I have no further comment.
Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of quick updates. Some of you, I imagine, have heard these. The legislature recently passed a bill that's waiting the governor's signature. It's called the Right to Speak Bill. It's been to Tallahassee a couple of times before, but it looks like it may actually be signed by the governor and apply to all local governments, except, of course, the legislature.
Oh, you mean to say that I don't get to speak in front of the legislature?
That's correct. But the main point, the main point that I wanted to make is that even though it's about four to five pages long, we already do all that. City of Palm Coast and our council rules and procedures already allows, as we've heard tonight, everyone to speak on all items. So it's not gonna affect the City of Palm Coast. It will affect probably some other local governments to a limited degree. But we do 99% of what already is in the bill. And the only other thing I wanted to mention to you tonight, and some of you may have seen this article, but we had, not too long ago, a pretty good battle over pill mills and pain mills. And you may remember that apart from the database, there was a question of funding of the database. And the purpose of the legislation, when they created that, was to have it funded with private. And there's not enough money. There hasn't been enough money to fund the continuation of that database. So this year, this year, the legislature, giving credit where credit is due, did fund it. They passed $500,000 in this year's budget to put a stopgap on. So for one more year, we're gonna have that database. And the statistics are quite amazing as far as the benefit to the public in the state of Florida associated with that database and these new regulations of pill mills. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
Couple of tree things. First of all, proud once again that for eight straight years, we've been designated as Tree City USA. And the seventh straight year, we got the Growth Award, which raises that level even higher. And then, because of our storm this past weekend, Arbor Day had to be postponed. And so I did want everybody to know that it has been rescheduled, including the run for May 18th at Central Park. I don't remember the times, but it'd be Saturday morning on May 18th. And I know that it's always bad to postpone, but if you were out there at Central Park, it looked more like Lake Central.
A 5K swim.
Yes, it would've been a 5K swim, so had no choice. Hopefully, everybody comes out on the 18th and still enjoys themselves. And we're gonna put the mayor in charge of the weather this time because I sure didn't do a very good job of it. Thank you all, that's all I had.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Move to adjourn.
We adjourn. Thank you very much for your participation.